Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Urbana City Council to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Barnes. Mr. Bowersox.
Here.
Mr. Garrick.
Here.
Mr. Lewis. Mr. Roberts.
I'm here.
Mr. Smythe. Ms. Stevenson.
Present.
Mayor Pressing.
Here. First item is approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, November 3rd, 2008. Okay, motion by Lewis, and who seconded that?
Say Heather.
Heather? Any additions or corrections to the minutes? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Any additions to the agenda? Petitions and communications. We have a presentation by the CU Marathon, Mark Knudsen. Is Mark Knudsen here?
Mayor, council members. I'm Don Flynn with the Champaign County Sports Commission, and I'm just going to introduce Mr. Knudsen and Mr. Bales, and they're going to actually do the presentation, but wanted to just give you a little bit of background on the Sports Commission. We are the Champaign County Sports Commission. We're a division of the CBB. We have 15 board members from both cities, Rantoul, Savoy, made up of representatives from the park districts, the University of Illinois, and business and community leaders. And so this started about a year and a half ago with Mark coming to town, approaching the Sports Commission, a lot of discussion about this marathon. I think you're going to find this presentation very interesting. This is going to be a tremendous event for our Twin Cities. Mark's got a lot of details here, but wanted to introduce Mark Knudsen with Tasmar Events and Joe Bales with Second Wind Running Club.
Council members, thank you for having me in front of you tonight. I will do the best I can to be...
Could you possibly sit down because the microphone will pick you up better if you're seated?
Oh, okay.
That's the little black critter on the desk.
Okay. Again, thank you for having me in front of you tonight. As Don had mentioned, about a year and a half ago, I made my first trip down to Champaign, Urbana, to present some, I guess it was a fact-finding mission about a possible Illinois marathon which would be held in this community. And a year and a half later, I'm pretty happy to say that things have lined up. A lot of good people have come together, a lot of sponsors have stepped up to the plate. There's been tremendous support. As of tonight, we have just over 750 people already signed up for this event. A month ago, we had 250. So in one month, we've added 500 people to the event. We're excited about that, but prior to having the event take place, I know that you've requested some information about it, and I'm here to present that information, and I'm here to answer any questions that you may or may not have. So with that, I'll get started, and we'll just go. And please feel free to interrupt me at any time with any questions or comments. The goal or the objective of this event is to create a first-class marathon in Champaign County. As you can see, I've highlighted what I'd like to see happen and what I believe will happen in developing strong partnerships, developing really a long-range plan. This is not, in my mind, a one-time sporting event. This is an event that I hope will be here for years to come, even well after I'm gone. So I believe it will happen. I know that the impact of a marathon on the communities and the people that are involved in it is great. It changes lives, and it is a fun event. For those of you who don't know what a marathon is, it's 26.2 miles, running or wheelchair. Athletes participate as well, 26.2 miles. And then, as you can see, from there, we are going to add different events. The half marathon, as you can guess, 13.1 miles. A four-person marathon relay, basically four people into 26.2 miles, so everybody runs about six and a half miles apiece. A 5K fun-run walk, 5K 3.1 miles. And then we'd like to have a half mile and a one-mile race for the kids in the community. We're going to be utilizing University of Illinois as the home, if you will, for the event, starting with the Health Expo, Health and Fitness Expo that'll take place on Friday, April 10th. We've contracted with the university's ARC building to host that. They'll do Pasta Feed, they'll do a full-blown expo with sporting goods retailers and health and fitness proponents. And that's Friday. We'll do packet pickup registration there Saturday morning. The race will start outside of Assembly Hall. The race will be a tour of the cities of Urbana and Champaign, and it will finish at the 50-yard line in Memorial Stadium. As you can see, being held on April 11th, 2009, kind of kicking off the spring running season, showcasing the cities. You know, our goal is to send thousands of runners to this community. And again, I'm not just planning on 2009, I'm planning on 2010 and '11 and '12 and years to come. And in doing so, you know, this will be a big benefit to everybody involved, University of Illinois, Champaign County Sports Commission, charity partners that we're going to partner with and make donations back to. Why Champaign County? Location is critical. For those of you who may or may not be familiar, Chicago Marathon was run about a month ago, a little over a month ago. It had 40,000 people that ran in the Chicago, or that signed up for the Chicago Marathon, about 32,000 finishers. I'm not planning to bring 32,000 people to your city, so you can take a breath. The goal, though, is to bring world-class runners here, and it's, as I don't need to tell you, you're in a great location. Intersection of two major interstates, Chicago, St. Louis, Indianapolis, you know, 20-plus million people within a three-hour radius. This just happens to be a great city for running in that it's flat, which is great for runners. It's going to be fast in April. It should be cool, hopefully not too cool. It shouldn't be overly hot. Those runners who go to run Chicago, while they get the big numbers, it's an expensive weekend. It's travel to get there is expensive. Motels are expensive, you know, taxis to get back and forth, and it's very much a hassle for those people. I know because I've done it. Champaign-Urbana, just the opposite. All the makings of a great location for a marathon. Beautiful city, you know, infrastructure is perfect. You've got, with the university, you've got all the parking and all the facilities that you need to start and finish the race. You've got all the lodging that you need. You've got an airport. You've got, again, access from traffic standpoint, from the interstate highway system. So that's part of the reason, and I'm going to go back to the University of Illinois, the venue, in which we're going to be starting and finishing this event. We need to make sure that if someday we have 10,000 or 15,000 runners here, that they can come in and there isn't a hassle, there aren't problems with parking, there are plenty of motel rooms to stay at. And that's what we have with the U of I. First-class facility, you know, again, back to things like the Health Expo, the Pasta Feed, starting line, and of course, the finish line in Memorial Stadium. What a better place to do it after its renovation. So it is a tremendous opportunity, I think, for us to promote the community to the rest of, not only the state, but actually the country. And right now, we have people coming in from eight different states so far, so you know, I expect that to continue to grow. A little bit about the course. As I mentioned, and as you can see to my right, we've got a couple of maps posted here. This is actually the route that we'll be using for the Illinois Marathon. The course is a great, should be a great tour of your community. 10 years ago, maybe even five years ago, if you were talking about putting a running event on, many of the cities would say, "Well, ship them off five miles out of town, have them run in from the cornfield." But you don't want that. You're bringing people in from all over the country to see your city. You want to showcase your city. So our goal is to take them through the campus, take them through the parks. You've got beautiful parks, take them through your neighborhoods, tree-lined streets, take them to the revitalized downtown area. Again, really trying to showcase what you guys have here. And you have all that. You have all that. You know, again, comparison to something like Chicago. This course will beat Chicago hands down. There's no question about it. Sponsors. You know, obviously, nothing like this takes place without some sponsors and some partners, I guess is probably a better way to put it. To date, I think we've done a pretty good job of connecting with quite a few of the local companies that keep your economy moving, starting, of course, with the university. Christie Clinic has stepped up to be the title sponsor for this event. As you may or may not know, they've been running an event called Run for the Health of It for the last 25 years. At the end of last year, they decided to do away with the Run for the Health of It and contacted me regarding the Illinois Marathon, and decided that they were going to not do the Run for the Health of It, but wanted to become the title sponsor for the Illinois Marathon. I think it says a lot about their commitment to the community and where they see the potential for this event. Bucy Bank, another cornerstone company, you know, in this community, has also stepped up. They are now the title sponsor for the youth run. They see the value in helping our children get out and start, you know, having active lives at an earlier age. Local companies like Body &amp; Soul, Marathon &amp; Beyond Magazine, just to name a few of the others, so... There's plenty of marketing that's being done right now. I have invested over $50,000 in a marketing campaign to date, and that marketing campaign consists of flyers, brochures, magazine advertisements. I've spent time at the Chicago Marathon Expo, the Twin Cities Marathon Expo, the Indianapolis Marathon Expo. All of those things are necessary to lay the groundwork for getting the people to come. And again, the goal is, whether we get 1,000 people or 5,000 people, I need you to understand that the goal is to put on a quality event. Because if we put on a quality event, those 5,000 or 1,000 people will tell five, 10 of their friends, and they will then bring more people, and it will grow exponentially. But again, the key is quality. It's not about hitting 20,000 people. It is about putting on a good event and giving people a value for their money. As I mentioned, the route has been determined. We had this route certified by a gentleman about three weeks ago, and when I say certified, this means it's an official Boston Marathon qualifying route. There are marathons out there that people can run, and if they run those marathons within a certain time, they'll qualify for the Boston Marathon, the oldest and most notable marathon in the world, hands down. This will be a certified Boston qualifier, so... Strong local committee has been in place for at least six months. Again, I started here a year and a half ago with some fact-finding. We had a small contingency of people at that point that were involved and were supportive of the concept. Since then, we've added sponsor employees, we've added law enforcement officials. I would say we've added individuals from the Urbana Police Department. Kent Jepson, who is not here right now, as he's training in Quantico. Kent has been just a tremendous asset to helping this event get off the ground. University of Illinois, faculty, officials, athletic department, the Convention and Visitors Barrow, Don, who is here with Champaign County Sports Commission, and of course, Second Wind Running Club. Second Wind Running Club, for those who don't know, is a local-based running organization. They're 400-plus members strong, and hopefully, in a couple of years, they'll be about 600-700 members strong as a result of this. Benefits of such an event? Exposure of Champaign County to the country. Increased local, regional awareness of an active, healthy lifestyle, i.e. more people running. Again, this is probably one that I personally get the most satisfaction out of. It isn't about somebody who can go out and run a two-and-a-half-hour marathon. It's about that person who sees what's going on and decides that it's time for him or her to try something different and to get off the couch and try to run even a 5K. You start that 5K, and the next year, they may do the half marathon, and the year after, they do the marathon. I know because I've put this event on where I'm from, Fargo, North Dakota, I've seen people's lives change. One of my best friends sat and watched the first-year marathon on the street corner smoking a cigarette. A year later, he ran the full marathon himself because his brother had just passed away from stroke and died of just poor, healthy lifestyle. Now, this best friend of mine has gotten a little bit overboard. He's an ultra-marathon runner, running 100-mile races, you know, six months at a time. So he's, you know, those are the great stories. Again, it's, you know, we will have people, we'll put on a quality event, it'll be big. But if you can change a couple of lives like that, that's really what it comes down to, in my mind. Charity donations and fundraising, those are big components of what we want to do. Will it be, you know, $20,000 first year? No, because this is like a business, and like any business, you've got a ton of startup costs, and you know, we're trying to get over that hump first. But ultimately, I see this being a great opportunity to give back to the community that supports it. I will reference what I do in Fargo. To date, we are coming up on our fifth year of the Fargo Marathon, and to date, we have given over $130,000 back to charity in the first four years of that event. So, you know, can we do the same thing here? I believe you can. I believe it can be bigger and better, just because of, again, the proximity to larger markets and the potential for more people. Fund public involvement. There are people who don't want to run, and I understand that. And if you don't want to run, then that doesn't, I mean, I still like you. I don't think you're a bad person. But those people that don't want to run can still be involved. Some of the most rewarding things for the marathon runners are the people who come out and line the course and cheer them on and play music and clap and get out there and welcome them to the city. You don't see that much of that in the big cities. You know, you will see it here. I believe you will. Once people kind of get into the idea of what they're doing, welcoming, you know, all these visitors to the city and really encouraging them to get through, I think that's what we'll have. And again, the economic impact, when this thing comes to fruition, it should be tremendous for the community. An average of $200 per runner is spent at Fargo during the marathon weekend. You know, and that includes motels, it includes restaurants, it includes shopping, gas stations, you know, you name it, anything like that. Some of the keys to the success, and I've talked a little bit about this, but take our time. You know, I didn't come down here a month ago and say we're going to slam this race in and have it April. I came a year and a half ago, quit my job, and have been living on a loan for the last year and a half to make this happen because I'm committed to it and I believe it. Quality, as I mentioned before, and we all know, whether it's your job or your family or whatever, quality versus quantity is the key to making things work. And be open to all ideas. We are very open. If somebody wants to join our committee, you're very welcome to do so, and we take all kinds of ideas, and you know, this is very much a working project. You know, think big and act small. Again, I do think that, you know, the long-term future of this is great, and I think that someday, we could say there are 20,000 people that come here. That being said, you know, we want to do the, we want to take care of the small things first. If you do that, if you take care of the pennies and nickels, all the dollars will take care of themselves, you know.
I think you do have a great plan here, and I wondered if you have very much more because we have other people waiting to talk. How far are you through your presentation?
I'm done.
You're done?
That's it.
Okay. Well, it's time for questions then. Charlie?
Yeah, thanks, Mark. I checked, you're up against the little alumni soccer tournament, which is beginning of May, so that was a concern I had. What would you like in terms of the number of runners?
I think first year, I'd be very happy if we were somewhere between 2,000 and 4,000 runners.
Okay, and...
Just to give you a comparison, the Fargo Marathon, which I've referenced a couple of times, our first year, 2005, we had 2,500 runners. This is all the events. Second year, we had 6,000 runners. Third year, we had 9,000 runners. And last year, we had just over 12,000.
Are you setting any limit at this point?
At this point, I'm not. At this point, I'm not. You know, if two months from now, we have 10,000 people, we probably would cap it, to be honest. Because I, you know, I don't believe that our first year, I think we should be really cautious to do it right.
Okay. And then, is the Sports Commission going to help organize volunteers and community involvement and that sort of thing? Okay.
They are. The Sports Commission has been very supportive and helpful with, to date, with, you know, both volunteers, with lining up sponsors. They've managed to set up a process for people to come to the community and go through their website to find lodging for the event, so just a variety of things.
Okay. And then, sir, hand out, I guess this has your website and everything on it? Or there's a reference from the...
Yeah. Joe, do you want to grab the flyers?
Okay, oh, the flyers, okay.
Joe's got some flyers that you can have, too.
Okay, well, I'm a member of Second Wind, so...
Oh, sure, yeah.
I'll get it that way, but others may want to know. And, yeah, my wife and I just talked about signing up for different aspects. I guess I would encourage the city council to consider, and mayor, consider sponsoring staff that want to run this, either teams or individually, in different events. Love to see a few firefighters and police officers and whatnot there.
You're asking for support from the city in terms of our police department and public works department, right?
We are. We are, yeah.
Yeah, okay. And, you know, you're talking about 4,000 runners, is that what you said?
Potentially, yes.
Maybe.
Yeah.
You know, because we have huge crowds that come to the football games, obviously, so it's, 4,000 is not that many.
Right, right.
Heather?
What is the fee to run?
The fee depends on two things. Number one, the race, because the marathon is more expensive than the half marathon. Right now, just for example, the marathon is $65, the half marathon's $45, and the 5K is $30.
Brandon?
Yeah, Mark, thanks. This is great. Is there anything else specifically that the city here can do to help you?
You know, not necessarily. I think it's just good to be in communication with everybody, and, you know, I will say that I'm not here asking for financial support. I know that there are events that come to town asking for that. I know these are not the best of economic times. We're going to, we'd like to prove it first, and hopefully, you know, down the road, it becomes something that you guys really value.
We talked, I don't know, was it two years ago? Remember, you came to my office and I encouraged you in this. There will be a cost to the city for the police and the public works, but I do think that this community is very oriented toward healthy lifestyles, so I think it kind of fits right in, and we can, you know, we'll see how it goes the first year. And when you said sponsor, what did you mean by that, Charlie?
We should consider helping to phrase some of the costs of teams, teams and or individuals running from the city, from city staff.
Well, we do, you will have a bill for the police and the public works, so maybe we should leave it at that. But people are welcome if they want to. Any other questions?
Yeah.
Okay, Dennis?
So it's going to be known as the Illinois Marathon.
Yes, sir.
Are you planning any kind of like special event, or is there going to be a thematic tie-in with the Lincoln birthday, the bicentennial?
There probably won't be, and the only reason why is because Springfield has a half marathon that they do in conjunction with that event. So it's, I didn't really want to step on their toes, and actually, we were originally going to be April 24th, but we, the spring football game moved us back to the 11th. So I'm actually a week after that half marathon, and I actually would have preferred it been further out so we could have coexisted a little bit better, but this will be the first year, and maybe we'll change it after that.
I think there was a famous three-legged race that Lincoln ran. I don't know if you want to include that in your event or not.
Maybe, maybe. That's right, in this town.
Yeah, on Main Street.
Yeah.
So we can talk to you about that.
Okay.
Okay, well, thank you very much for all your planning, and it seems like you have worked things out very well.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Okay, Diana Visick.
Hi, I'm Diana Visick, and I live at 608 West Pennsylvania Avenue in Urbana. I recently read in the News Gazette that you were considering implementing a criminal nuisance property ordinance in order to combat crime, make neighborhoods safer, and reduce the number of police calls. While those are desirable objectives, I feel this ordinance won't accomplish the goal. The first problem is that this ordinance punishes the wrong property, the wrong party. The landlord isn't the one who caused the bad behavior. Justice requires that punishment belong to the person who actually committed the crime. The second problem is that Urbana has stated in the past that individuals who have committed crimes may experience a change of heart and decide to improve their behavior. This ideal is what motivated the provision in the Human Rights Ordinance to prohibit landlords from discriminating against prospective tenants with criminal records. Presumably, someone is just as likely to experience a change of heart at his current address as he would be at a different one. Moving one's household goods doesn't materially contribute to a change of heart. And if one hasn't experienced a change of heart, moving doesn't improve one's behavior either. All it does is foist the problem on some other landlord and make the police go to a different address. The only way to reduce the number of police calls is to reduce bad behavior, not move it around the city. The usual way to reduce bad behavior is through incarceration, but it may only last until the individual is out of jail. A more effective way is by attempting to provoke a change of heart. Restorative justice is an international movement now 30 years old which attempts to accomplish this goal by helping offenders see the effect that their behavior has had on the victim. Locally, we have restorative justice in the form of the Victim Offender Reconciliation Program for youthful offenders offered through the Regional Planning Commission. They've added a circle mediation program to address crimes involving multiple victims and offenders, and for situations when the distinction between the two is blurred. It might be possible to extend this program to adults. For situations where there is no clear victim, we might be able to create a good neighbor counseling program to help offenders see the effect their behavior has on the community at large. If Urbana is serious about wanting to reduce police calls, then our ordinances need to go to the heart of the problem rather than attacking third parties. We need to provoke a change of heart, whether through restorative justice or through other means. The third problem with this ordinance is that it is intended to be used selectively against particular property owners. As members of minority and other groups will tell you, selective enforcement has been responsible for great oppression. I'm sure that those in charge felt that they were doing it in order to uphold the standards of their communities, but history provides a different opinion. Selective enforcement is dangerous, and not in keeping with the high standards of justice. Selective enforcement is dangerous, and not in keeping with the high standards of justice that Urbana citizens desire. In closing, while combating crime, making neighborhoods safer, and reducing police calls are extremely important, this ordinance isn't the way to go about it. We need to look more deeply and solve the problem at its source. Thanks.
Charlie?
Diana, thanks. Would you please email me your statement when you get a chance?
Yes.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Have you looked at communities where this has been used in Illinois?
I just heard a talk by Howard Zaire, who was one of the founders of this. And he has a little book that I've gotten that I haven't had time to read yet. But it seems that they are using it all over internationally also.
Yeah, I'm talking about the criminal nuisance ordinance.
I know that, that there are some. I still don't, even just the fact that they're using it, I don't think that that still justifies selective enforcement and hassling third parties who don't actually commit the crime.
All it's doing is trying to get the landlord to be responsible for the conduct on the property. And people who don't know how to live with other people and are creating a problem, you know, then that landlord doesn't have to rent to them.
No, I understand that landlords would not have to. But I really don't think it is fair to make a landlord responsible for the behavior of tenants. I think we're each responsible for our behaviors. Once we reach the age of majority, obviously, it's different for kids, but.
Okay, but my question to you was, have you looked at the effect of this ordinance in other communities in Illinois where it's been enacted?
No, I have not. But to me, certainly as a libertarian, whatever positive effect there would be, would be outweighed by the gross trampling on rights of others by making landlords responsible and by selective enforcement. I think selective enforcement is inherently a bad idea.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'll get it.
Oh, Dennis?
I always find that you always bring really interesting viewpoints to our council. And sometimes we have, something looks really good, and without a little bit more discernment, we just think we're doing a great job. So I appreciate your coming forward and making us look even harder. I know that I myself wouldn't even want to be responsible for the actions of my brother, much less my tenant, so that words, those words do have some effect. Thank you very much.
Thank you for considering this. I mean, this is a community problem. We need to take care of it, but I just think in a, in a better way. So thanks.
Wayne Johnson?
Hello, I'm Wayne Johnson, 1810 South Vine Street, Urbana, Illinois. When I first heard about Urbana's new proposal for a criminal nuisance property, property ordinance, as a libertarian, as a Republican, I was offended, as you might expect. My first thought was, well, the liberty and the rights and the property rights of the people are under attack. Again, as not before in recent history. Man, there's so much effort required to maintain our rights and liberties. Rust never sleeps. My second thought was, the people are sovereign. We must restrain the servants of the people from acting as if they were the masters of the people. And I, I know you mean well, but it, it doesn't come across well. And my third thought was, looking at the list of things this was to cover, I said, what is mob action? I thought that was something we do in the streets and around government buildings. Does that mean if we storm the Bastille that the city will hold itself responsible? Next, I thought that this ordinance is a direct attack on the poorest people in the community and the minority people in our community. I was concerned that the downtrodden people in our society were going to be picked on, yet more, by the elitist oligarchy that thinks that it owns Urbana. I imagined the situation of a, of a young lady, perhaps, she was beaten by a boyfriend and kicked him out, and then found another, another young man sometime later, and then, then those two had a fight. So now there's two, two offenses on a property, and what did the landlord have to do with this? And then I read that the part that, well, it could be, it could be enforced selectively. And again, that's even, that's even worse, that we have the opportunity of capricious enforcement and going, going after landlords that for whatever reason we don't like. But okay, it's the wealthy landlords who can afford to pay for that. Is that true? Can the landlords and the landowners afford this? Who's going to pick this up? It's going to eventually fall on the tenants. Should they be responsible for the behavior of the tenants? The landlords will have to profile their renters to avoid this trouble. But that's discrimination, which, this sort of discrimination is not the discrimination that we mean that's clear thinking. It's a kind of discrimination that's a code word for racism. So there's going to be a lot more lawsuits and a lot more work for lawyers in our community. That's not a bad thing, I suppose, but I don't think it's a good thing. Landlords will leave Urbana. Property values will go down. The tax base will be reduced. Rents will go up. Renters will leave Urbana and go elsewhere. The taxes will go up for those who are alive and still remain. And for what? For the erroneous notion that properties produce crimes and that landowners and property owners are responsible for those that they leased their property to. People produce crimes, not properties, and they're not, crimes are not encouraged by landlords. Finally, why does Urbana continue to torment its people? Why? We moved here by our own choice. I guess we could just leave, as so many others have done. And why does Urbana continue to use the heavy hand of the fascist police power as a solution for everything? Why does Urbana continue to shoot itself in the foot and drive people away, drive your businesses away? I was walking in Lincoln Square this week, and I saw in 1965, they built this as perhaps one of the first, or maybe the first mall of that type. What has happened to this community? What is happening to this society? I think we need to, to think about these things seriously before we come, come with more reductions of people's natural rights and, and more police power and more authoritarianism that just makes people feel angry and sorry. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the Urbana City Council? Okay, we'll move on to Old Business, ordinance number 2008-11-129, an ordinance amending the City of Urbana Comprehensive Plan 2005. This is for the Crystal Lake Neighborhood Plan Amendment. Robert Myers, our planner.
The Urbana Committee of the Whole, at its November 10th meeting, forwarded this plan to the City Council with the recommendation for approval, with one additional change, which has been prepared and is in your packet, verbatim, as, as the committee had recommended. And just to provide a background for, for the audience, the Crystal Lake Neighborhood Plan is intended to provide guidance for future decision-making for the area around Crystal Lake Park, Carl Hospital, and, and the area that addresses. City staff recommends approval.
Is there a motion? Motion by Dennis Roberts.
To approve it?
And adopt it.
Seconded by Robert Lewis. Any further discussion? I would like to say that I think the community development staff did a great job working with the neighborhood and with Carl on this Crystal Lake Neighborhood Plan. It is a very comprehensive document, and I want to thank you for all the work that was put into it. Is there any other discussion?
I, I just want to say thanks to Charlie, to the mayor, to Carl Hospital for collaboratively working together to get this, while it may just be wording in a book, it's, has, you know, things that hold weight for years to come. So thanks to everyone who worked together to make this work, I think, the way it should for the city and for Carl.
Okay, any other discussion? If not, would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Bowersachs?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next, reports of standing committees. The Committee of the Whole?
Yeah, the Committee of the Whole met last Monday, November 10th, and forwarded six items to council for a vote tonight. The first is ordinance 2008-11-132, vacating a portion of Bucy Avenue between Park Street and Church Street. For the committee, I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Bowersachs, seconded by Lewis. Any discussion? If not, would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Bowersachs?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
That motion carries. Mr. Bowersachs?
Yes. For the committee, next, I move approval of ordinance 2008-11-131, approving and authorizing the execution of a mutual aid agreement with the Illinois Public Works Mutual Aid Network.
I'll second that.
Motion by Bowersachs, seconded by Roberts. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Bowersachs?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Next, a resolution, number 2008-11-023R, extending the builder ban a tax rebate program for two additional years until December 1st of 2010. For the committee, I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Bowersachs, seconded by Stevenson. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries.
Next is ordinance 2008-11-133. This is the annual tax levy ordinance of the City of Urbana, Illinois, for the year beginning July 1, 2008, and ending June 30, 2009. For the committee, I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Bowersachs, seconded by Garrick. Any discussion? Would the clerk call, call the roll, please?
Mr. Bowersachs?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
No.
Okay, that motion carries. Mr. Bowersachs?
Next, ordinance 2008-11-134 is an ordinance abating the tax levy for $965,000 of general obligation bonds, Series 2005. For the committee, I move approval.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Bowersachs, seconded by Lewis. Any discussion? Would the clerk call the roll?
Mr. Bowersachs?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
That motion carries. Mr. Bowersachs?
Finally, the last piece of the property tax is Resolution 2008-11-024R. This is a resolution directing the Champaign County Clerk to abate the tax levy for the general corporate purpose for the year beginning July 1, 2008, and ending June 30, 2009. For the committee, I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Bowersachs, seconded by Lewis. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries.
Do we?
I move that we go, come back into open session.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, we're back in session. But we'll have to wait for the clerk and Mr. Lewis. Madam Clerk, we voted to come back into open session.
It was motioned by Charlie and seconded by David.
And it was unanimous. Okay, next is Resolution number 2008-11-025R, a resolution approving the settlement of litigation regarding 809 West Main Street. Can I move?
I second.
That was a motion by Heather Stevenson, seconded by somebody over here.
David.
David Garrick, okay. Is there any discussion? That's what it is. That's what it is. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? That motion carries. Ordinance number 2008-11-136, an ordinance approving the extension of final plat approval for the Wisely Inn Super 8 Motel First Subdivision. Robert Myers?
Hi, on June 2nd, this body approved an ordinance approving the final subdivision plat for the Wisely Inn Super 8 First Motel, excuse me, Wisely Inn Super 8 Motel First Subdivision. It's located near the intersection of Killarney and North Lincoln Avenue. The engineer is asking for a 180-day extension of the plat so they can make some final revisions before filing the plat. And this is, the subdivision code allows this body to extend the plat for another 180 days, and the city staff is recommending approval.
Okay, I make a motion then, if there's no discussion, to approve ordinance number 2008-11-136, which would be an extension of that plat.
Second.
First motion by Roberts, then seconded by Stevenson. Is there any discussion? Mr. Lewis?
This section that they added on to it, is this, how, how close, in close proximity is this to the floodplain that's out there in this area? Is that an issue here at all?
No, let me get you the specific information. Let me see if that was in our previous ordinance here. I don't have the specific information on that, but my recollection is there wasn't any question with the floodplain. There is, there is stormwater management that they're putting in place. In fact, they had to do calculations to enlarge the existing drainage basin to incorporate additional stormwater from this new lot that's been created next to the existing hotel. So I know that they have dealt with it extensively. And in terms of, in the floodplain, my recollection from the previous approval was that there was, none of this property was in, under your floodplain.
It's farther east?
Yep. Thank you.
So when's their expected completion?
Well, I don't know exactly. I just know within 180 days. They are moving forward with plans for another motel adjacent to the existing one, and that this is, this is the first step, the preparation for it. But I don't know exactly when that will be.
So it might be ready for the second marathon? Is what you're saying, right?
That's what it sounds like to me.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those, no, this is an ordinance. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Bowersachs?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
That motion carries. Finally, I'm asking for the reappointment to the housing authority of Clyde Walker.
Second.
Motion by Smythe, seconded by Lewis. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? That motion carries. Thank you very much. I believe there's no further business, so this meeting is adjourned.